Please testify in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. All right, thank you, please have a seat. Roll coffee.
Part a little bit.
Cheers.
Kramer. Reichner.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Ister.
Were there any audience comments on the Jenna Adams' opening?
Regina Russell, Sunbury Democratic Committee Woman's Award II. On the under new business where you're doing the handicap parking code revision, I'm not sure exactly what that is, but I have a concern about something that was mentioned when Councilmember Reese had mentioned that the city council been in charge of issuing, was it the issuance of the...
No, not the city council. It's the city administrator and the Department of Public Works supervisor.
So I misunderstood what I heard that evening?
Yeah, if they don't, if a person doesn't agree with the decision, they have the ability to appeal to the city council.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other audience comments on the Jenna Adams' opening? We have a special guest today from Birthright of Sunbury, Mrs. Dee Romi.
Romi.
Romi, sorry.
And Ellie Folbriede, she's actually the founder of Birthright of Sunbury. Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, and the audience. We really appreciate this opportunity to be able to talk about our program that has been out in Sunbury for over 35 years. We're on our 36th year now. So I would like to say that this program addresses the poverty, the families living within poverty within our area, and not only poverty, but deep poverty. That's families who are living 50% below the poverty level, and Northumberland County is in crisis. Of all our four county areas that we serve, Northumberland, Union, Montour, and Snyder, Northumberland has the high risk of infants, and that's who we directly take care of, our infants, and mothers and fathers. We have a great increase of parents right now who are abandoning their children due to opioid addiction, jail, and just a genuine disinterest in raising their children. So grandparents and great-grandparents are stepping up to fill that void. And we were founded in 1983, and our mother company is out of Canada. There are about 400 birthrights throughout the United States, five in Africa, and several in New York. So we're an all-volunteer organization, and we've been, the community has been very generous. We've been able to serve over 1,000 requests yearly for a very long time through church donations. We do not take any government funding. We are a pro-life organization, so we do not receive any government funding. It's all from individuals, foundations, grants, and just genuine donations. And here's Ellie Folbriede, our founder from 1983.
Well, one thing I do want to address with you, you seem to have a very large male audience tonight, but the new generation, the fathers, are taking care of children as much as the mothers. So you can imagine how important it is to have diapers, to take your child to daycare, and wipes, so that's a service that we can offer. Also, Dee has a packet here, this is called a lait. It's a French word for a baby list of supplies that you need when you bring the child home from the hospital, and that consists of about $80 worth of equipment. So every new mother receives one of these. They just simply have to come in and show the identification from the hospital, so this is a very worthwhile project also. We assist with formula, so many of our clients walk everywhere, so now we have lost the WIC office, it's now over in Schmucken Dam. That makes it very difficult for some of our clients, but we're able to help with formula. So some of the things that we're doing is not being done in any other agency. You can go to Salvation Army for food, you can get the listing of places to eat in Sunbury, which are many, and I'm very happy that our community does that kind of thing. But when it comes to your babies, we're the only agency that really fulfills that need, and we've been here a long time, and we're happy to know that, to let you know that some of the people who have been coming through our doors are out working, they're taxpayers, they live in Sunbury, and they're producing taxes, and they're working good jobs, and they're raising their children and attending our schools. So we have seen all of that over 35 years, and now Dee has been our director for 15 years. And we welcome volunteers to come in. Again, it's mostly women that volunteer, but we have a wonderful board, and they have been very active. We're just ready to do a retirement party for a woman who's 90, and she has been very active in our community. So if anybody needs any information, we have flyers, we have our yearly report that shows all the statistics of how many people we serve, and then, of course, pens and a brochure.
We do have a variety of different programs for the parents promoting literacy, they get extra items at Birthright if they take a library book. So we work in concert with the library also. They can get a library card, go on up, and then they come back down and get extra diapers or formula from Birthright. We have, that's the reading program. We have a lot of resource information about all the pantries, the food at the Food Shelter, the Behavior Ministry, Salvation Army, Children in Youth. We have caseworkers that come over quite a bit on behalf of their clients. So all of this has been done for 36th year, just on donations, and that's what we're doing for the community, helping them to survive within poverty.
Does anybody have any questions?
And you're located in the Dagenstein Library on the first floor?
Yes, we are.
So how long have you been in that building?
Since 2013. We're on the main street for quite a number of years, and John Daigle ran it property to us for how long?
For 23 years.
23 years.
$75 a month. For a whole house.
So the community's been very kind to us, the churches are very good to us, Eagles, the 503, the Kimwana's, everybody is really kind, and that's how we get through each month, just being provided, and Giving Tree Christmas time, and several fundraisers.
I want to thank you both for coming and sharing your thoughts. I've received a resignation from one of our city employees. Paula Mitchell, who is our Police Department City Clerk, she is leaving our city September 27th, 2019. I make a motion to accept this resignation.
Second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
As most of you are aware, we've conducted the Police Department candidate testing, and we have a social service list of eligibility. I make a motion to hire Terry Ketchum at a Patrolman III salary of $53,000 with a start date of October 7th, full-time status with a one-year probationary period. Do I have a second?
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Mr. Mayor, that second officer there, I think we should take in table that for the simple reason we're working on the budget, and this wasn't initially, you'd work on a plan hiring right now.
It's in my 2019 budget.
Well, we haven't even dealt with the budget yet, so I just think that's a suggestion.
All right, and then we have another officer, Michael Duarte. His salary would be a probationary status of $45,760 with a start date of November 4th of 2019 and a one-year probationary status. And just so the council is aware, my 2020 so far for the budget and the salary for just the Police Department officers, it is slated to be $1,030,000. For 2019, it was $1,109,000. For 2018, it was $1,097,000, and so forth, and it is $80,660 less than the 2019 budget, and it's going to allow us to have 10 full-time officers plus one full-time chief. Do you have our 20, do you have our 2020 projection of MML? This is just, this is what the Treasurers Office gave me. Okay, so we are, do we have our 2021, 2022 projection?
Well, here's the MML for 2020, $78,363.
Okay, do we have 2021?
No, we don't.
Yeah, we'll do it at the end of 2020, right?
Please, you come in office, you come in office.
And...
The 901 forms, $123,625.
Do we, obviously, have we had to look at what the five-year plan is for those officers? We can budget that out based off of our income coming in and our expenses going out. We know what that is, because we don't know, we don't have a budgeted income for 2020 yet, right?
Maybe not.
Okay. So that's, I guess, the only, it's great to be below budget from last year, I think that's... Well, it's, it's below budget since 2016. But is our income going to be that way for next year too? Is our income going to be the same as next year? That's the only question that I would have. And I guess that's where I see that, where, because we have a budgeting income coming in probably, I think we're going to set it up two weeks?
Yep.
So at that point, we'll have a general idea of the income, right, for the 2020, and we can come back next meeting and do this, correct? Because you proposed it to start in November. November 7th. So if next meeting, we know that our income is looking sustainable, that there's no issues there, we come back, we do a next meeting, and it's, we're good to go, no additional issues. Does that make sense, or no? Yeah, no, that's fine, okay. All right, all right. I make a motion to hire Marcus Bethel to replace Paula in the administrative assistant position full-time for Police Department. Jody, what was, there was $13 an hour.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Councilman Reichner?
Mike? Yes. Mayor, Council, today I am proposing for final approval on a sub, or, excuse me, a consolidation subdivision that is being held at 149, 151 Fairmont Avenue. The reason for the consolidation is the Bimbo areas have just been recently purchased by Sunbury Realty LLC, and are looking to maybe develop some of the areas, sell them off and develop them, so they're not taking lots for us. Unfortunately, this particular property does not meet our current zoning standards. It was an older home that was there, it was raised, so they come to make the two lots into one that wouldn't meet our current zoning standards. The plan was submitted on August 30th. The county planning, whose initial step, approved the plan on August 27th. SMA Water, somewhere in this 12th, I apologize, approved on 8:30. Somewhere in this 12th sewer approved on 9:03. The initial engineer review came in at 9:09 with one concern, the concern being they did not submit a resolution because they are an LLC for someone to sign the intent of the owner on the plans. We did receive that, let me back up a second. City planning did approve the project on 9/19 with the resolution from the owners of the property on the resolution to sign the plans. And I received the final engineer review this afternoon saying that everything meets the city standards.
Can I make a motion, we accept the findings and allow us to...
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Mayor, would you have about five to 10 minutes after the meeting to sign those plans so we can get them going and generate tomorrow morning?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ocker?
Yes, I'd like to recommend the hire of part-time employee for Department of Public Works, Larry Shaw, at the wage of $10 per hour.
Make a motion to hire him?
Second.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
And the handicap?
So this is the second reading of the proposed handicap parking ordinance revision. There were no changes since the last time, there was no change submitted. Remains the same, whereas there is the opportunity to have a reserved handicap parking sign versus a general parking, handicap parking sign. The reserved handicap parking sign comes with some additional fees involved, which will be set by resolution of the council. The general handicap, and that, then that reserved sign will include the person who applied for it, their CAG number, so that that space can only be used exclusively by them. The general handicap parking would remain as it has been in the past where there is a marking, a sign demarcating the handicap space, however, it is a public space and anyone with a handicap placard could park in that space.
I'm going to form a motion.
Second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Okay, and then for the city fee schedule, this has to do now with the time fee for this program that the application fee, to submit application for either the general space or the reserved space, there's an application fee of $25. For the, and for a general space, again, can be used by, it will still remain a public space, there's no additional fees. However, for the designated reserved space, there will be $75 for the initial sign, and that's based on the cost of DPW making the sign and then putting the sign in place, et cetera. And then to renew that reserved space every year, there would be a fee of $50, and that would include being able to go verify that the space is still in need, making sure that we have the administrative things in place, and that's the proposed fee schedule.
Motion to update the fee schedule as proposed there.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
And next is the leaf pickup policy. It's fall, the leaves are starting to fall, and so this is the plan for being able to pick up leaves across the city. First of all, the pickup plan is in conjunction with the street sweeping. So in order to maximize best effort to clean the streets, there would be a leaf pickup on the day before the scheduled street sweep at night. So, and then the rules as far as DPW being able to pick up the leaves, we have to make sure that the leaves should not be in bags, they will not pick up leaves that are placed in garbage bags, the leaves need to be piled loosely along the curb line in what's called a windrow, a very long pile, new word I learned today. And you must, the piles must be free of limbs, sticks, shrubbery, brush, garbage, rocks, concrete, metal, pet waste, or anything else that is not leaves. It's preferred that they be placed at the front of the property, or they can be placed at the rear, but no later than 7:00 a.m. on the pickup day, and make every effort where you place the leaves not to impede drainage over inlet grates, and then don't park your vehicles then on top of the leaves, which makes it difficult to sweep them up. They will also accept leaves at the brush pile as normal on Saturday mornings.
Say about the unlined trash container?
Oh, yeah, and so in addition to just piling them up loosely, you can put them in the unlined trash container, similar to what we've done with the brush throughout this year, unlined container. I recently received a letter from Ms. Amy Ryan. She is the property owner of 59 North, Front North Fourth Street, and she's inquiring about the potential for the city of Sunbury to acquire her property, for her to be able to donate the property. She's relocated in North Carolina. I recommend that we just look into the matter, as we have before the title search, et cetera, before considering it.
She wants to sell it to the city, is that right?
She wants to give it to the city.
Oh, give it to the city?
No.
Okay, we'll do the, we'll do the numbers stuff, we'll verify the delinquency taxes and stuff like that. Sure. If it's a historical property.
Now, she does claim it's historic property, it is in historic district.
Jody, did you speak with her?
I did.
You did? Okay, so you know she wants, because she said she's amenable to a range of solutions, which doesn't say to me she just wants to donate it, but she did tell you she wants to donate.
She did say that on the phone, but then, of course, the letter came afterwards, so after, I told her that she should consult with an attorney before she offered it to the city, so...
That's not the first time that's happened, but, you know, we, and once we find out exactly if there is delinquencies and stuff like that, then we'll be able to sit down and better, and better, have a better understanding of what we can do.
Okay. All right. Next is the outfitting of the police interceptor estimate, I'm going to defer to the OIC Brad Hare.
Over the last couple of months, obviously, the mayor signed for the new car in May, should be here beginning of, actually, it went on the assembly line, actually, on September 11th. Should be here by end of the year, but beginning of next year is one of the cool big delivery and all that good stuff, so we're not worried about the next year's budget. But in the meantime, we have to outfit the car, make sure we have that set up, because the two places I went to did Keystone Communications and 911 Rapid Response out of hand, WPA. Been working within the last couple of weeks, the last couple of months, trying to get, compare apples, oranges, compare what we have. And I had Keystone came in, Keystone also, they subcontract their decal, so it would have to go out somewhere else to decal. So the total price of Keystone and the decal place would be $11,025.80, and with 911 Rapid Response, they're all in-house, it'd be $11,018.60. The one thing, the only problem is with the old Crown Vic, is we're going to take what equipment we can to put it over the new car, we're going to be able to put the camera, the computer, and the radio in the new car without a problem. The new Explorers came out, for some reason, they're really wiser, so we can't convert the light bar over. However, we did save some money because the mayor was amicable to basically, we're going to put the light bar on the inside of the windshield, so it's going to save us a couple of dollars there. And a lot of the lights that we're actually putting in the car, they're all, everything's brand-new when it comes to seats, the seats can't go over from the Crown Vic, the partition, none of that can go over in the new Explorer. So we had to buy all-new, which is, the benefit of buying all-new with the lights and all that stuff is everything's under warranty, because everything in the Crown Vic right now is out of warranty.
You gave us two prices.
Correct.
Is that $22,000 or $23,000 in? Do I fit that, or is...
No, no, one is $11,025.80.
Okay.
And 911 Rapid Response is $11,018.60.
So we're looking at $22.60.
Nope.
Those are bids.
Those are bids.
Other bids, oh.
$50 cents a bid.
I'm filling with three or any of that kind of stuff.
It's all co-star, everything's co-star for a man, so I just wanted to, a product of the mayor's attention and Jody's attention, we need to buy a vote on that, because it's so much to outfit cars. And that's just the norm, honestly, it's the norm, we're not getting any special bells and whistles.
Is that 2019 money, or is it 2020?
That will be 2020 budget.
The phrase included with the...
2020 money.
This is excess of car, and it's 2020 budget, and also, I think the way they've done it before is the treasurer finds, the treasurer, he went out and got bids from the banks to get the total loan for the car and the outfitting of the car, and they just had one payment, you know, they usually spread it out over a couple of years.
Thank you, Brad.
Make a motion? Make a motion to accept the lower...
911 Rapid Response. Well, we, I just got to get it scheduled, I got to get it scheduled, because they're booking out, they, they're going off.
So we're making a motion for the Rapid Response?
Yep.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Shetree, so we have established a Shetree Commission, I have to say that they are enthusiastic about their duties. Mr. Snuck, Bob Snyder is here.
We're truly enthusiastic, right?
Chainsaw Bob.
Chainsaw Bob, yeah, cut them all down and we'll solve our problem. Thank you, we had our first meeting tonight. We are asking that the Street Department does trim the trees on Market Street, if that's possible, sometime this fall, get that done. We'd also like to ask assistance in applying for any grants through DCNR or any other agencies that might be able to bring us some money. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, October 15th, at 5:30. Most importantly, we are currently reviewing the ordinance that we have in place. It's woefully short in many, many areas. We would ask that we would have the ability to get some assistance from Joel East, and we do have an Allentown ordinance that looks very thorough, and so we're reviewing that, and hopefully, on the 15th, are going to ascertain what parts of that we want to use. But again, we'd like to have the permission to contact our attorney, when necessary. The last thing that we're asking for, we realize when we're looking at this, that asking a homeowner to, or a business to cut down a tree or to do work on the tree is fairly expensive, several thousand dollars. None of us are arborists, we have, through Jody Ocker, have talked to lawyers landscaping, we're going to negotiate with them, they get $45 an hour for an actual arborist to look at this. So what we felt, getting together at this point, was that we would look at it, and if we deem it necessary, and think that we have to ask a homeowner to tear, to take down a tree or spend thousands of dollars, we should have an outside, third-party, objective opinion. That costs money, therefore, we need a budget. We don't know what that would be, we'll be very prudent, and we're actually going to try to negotiate. Chris Reese had a suggestion that rather than the $45 an hour, we try to come up with a per incident look at, you know, sometimes it'll take them an hour and a half, sometimes it might take them 30 minutes and just say, you know, rather than trying to review and get to the point where all of a sudden all these hours were spent to get a hard number from them, I don't know if they'll go for that, but I wanted to try to negotiate that with them. So we would respectfully ask that you find a way to, this year, picking arbitrary number of $1,000, allow us to have that much to spend prudently and only as necessary, but we do have several trees right now, there are four different areas that, one of them, Mr. Reichter, Councilman Reichter, excuse me, had asked for, is the 12th Street tree. It is very large, it will be very expensive to remove. There are some issues, perhaps, the Street Department will ask Steve to look at that one more time. Previously, years ago, there was concern about it pushing out on the curb. There has been mitigation done to the tree and to the sidewalk, and the sidewalk has been done, but they had to cut the roots to do it. Therefore, we feel that we really need an expert opinion to tell us the tree's condition. So right now, we need to spend at least $50 to do that. If we don't do that, we're kind of like at a standstill.
The reason why that was permitted at that time? The reason why that was permitted at that time, to make, make the adjustments to the tree, was there was other ones in that area that that was allowed to be done. The same thing, I think there was one over on Washington Avenue, there was one on Lime Street. And you can see where the curbing was moved around and stuff like that. So we were looking at potential legal.
Well, then, Mary, that's why, I mean, I, I believe for this commission to exist, we have to have an arborist, uh, an expert, because we're going to sit in court, when you tell somebody they're gonna spend five or ten thousand dollars, they're not just gonna open up their wallet and do it, so let's, let's be proactive versus reactive and give us the, uh.
We got the budget coming up.
Actually, I have an idea, so we can't add anything, obviously, a line item budget. What we have, I'm looking, Steve and we have an issue with this level now. We have a line item in our budget that's, um, miscellaneous for the public works. We're under budget on that right now. I think this is important since it's obviously pushing on curbs, that falls under public works. For top and fifty bucks at least for this one, just check with us on any further ones this year. And then we'll look at a line item for next year's budget. That way you don't need anything, oh, you don't need anything. Just check with me, check with Jody, whoever from the spot of that line item. Probably can do it and get it done. Because that's been a year long.
Yeah, it's been a long time, Tom.
Yeah, just go ahead and do it.
All right, are there any questions?
Yeah, one last thing, you might want to ask them to look at all three of those trees.
Well, there are two trees on that property, not three.
Two on the side, one on the front.
On the side, okay. So then you're talking on Lime Street side?
I think there's two on twelve street.
There's two on twelve.
One on Lime Street.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's what was looked at before, but again, I don't wanna say past practice, but the way it was done prior, uh, was they allowed them to make adjustments to the sidewalks and, and get rid of, cut the tree back. So we tried to, and it was already established ones there at that time.
So are you saying that based on your prac, past practice, you would allow that tree to stay or you would remove it?
We did allow that tree to stand.
You did?
Yes, because we did not have anybody that was certified to say, and the tree wasn't dead, it had some.
Now, and it's not dead now, that's why we're, we're saying we really.
It's a hazard, but we could not, we didn't have the credentials to say it. Okay.
Two things, real quick. Number one, I don't think you have to worry about past practice or anything that was set, because this is a new, uh, group, you're, you're, you're a new council appointment, so I don't think you have to worry about that legally, number one. Now, obviously, legal ramification, but not past practice of the former group. But the other thing is, I would like a, I do think I should work with you guys on a new ordinance, mainly because I think the old ordinance was patterned after something that was enacted in like nineteen forty.
Oh, absolutely, no.
And we should definitely update that, I know there, I looked at it a year ago, it first came up, and there's a new ordinance that is pretty overreaching that we can work with. Um, so I would like, uh, council permission to work with them in order to update that ordinance.
Our question was at the time, uh, if we made that gentleman take action, we had to go back and make everybody else take action?
Nope, this is a new, new, starting all over.
Well, I'm saying though, if somebody complained, then the, the thing that we used prior to that.
Well, this is a new, but it, it had separate change, because those trees aren't dead. So what was yesterday is not necessarily tomorrow, if you understand what I'm saying.
Okay.
So the situation five years ago is definitely different than what it is today, because those trees continue to grow. It would be the same thing actually if they were dead, because they'd be falling apart. Um, so no, that, we don't have to worry about precedent in that manner, simply because everything's changed.
Right.
Okay.
Well, because your invoice would be invaluable, and I think necessary for us to have the due diligence to make this work.
Yeah, I agree with you, I mean, not about the invaluable work, but about the necessity of having a new ordinance.
Jody, sorry, did Eric give you the information he required?
Uh, yes, I was, have been talking to Eric, and he and I are meeting tomorrow to talk about the, what he's found and, because he has been looking at the shade tree and trees ordinances, so we will all get together.
I read some of it today, he found some good information.
Well, there's a definite statute that tells you exactly what you have to do. And it's, I mean, it's set forth pretty clearly, if I remember correctly, from a year ago when I first looked at it, when we first dealt with the tree issue up on sixteenth, the river.
Twelfth.
Twelfth, twelfth street.
Also, as a housekeeping issue, we will need, it, we don't have a city clerk anymore, the ordinance, right now, reads the city clerk would be the secretary. So, uh, we were, are asking that some representative from the city, a third party, be there to take the notes, so it's not, so it's done properly.
If you're consistent, and Jolene can't do that, if you're consistent with your reading dates and the blind is open.
Yeah.
I think she would probably, I can't speak for her, but I would talk to her.
Okay, that, that's what I was hoping, Glenda.
You want them, you want them, uh.
It's, well, an hour, we'll keep the meeting to an hour, uh, the next meeting is October fifteenth at five-thirty somewhere here. We'll have, that will be in the advertisement that will last to be placed.
Keep, we have to speed on that.
Yeah, well, there's a lot to do here, so that's, but we need your cooperation, obviously, to make this work, so. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Oh, yes, sir.
We have a tree on Edison Avenue, the city person's private yard. It's been losing branches for at least fifteen years. He's been asked to cut it down, he says, no, I'm not going to. But he tells his tenants, do not let your kids out in the yard, this tree is dangerous. But we won't take it down. Are you guys going to be able to do anything with that?
Well, the current ordinance for us only is shade trees and only along the, the streets. So we would have absolutely no jurisdiction as the trades, uh, as it stands now.
We went out and looked at that tree last year, I remember Mike Boardner.
Well, it's lost two more branches since.
So I remember Joel at the time, you may remember, you basically said it was a civil issue.
Well, it is, if it's not within our right of way.
Did you guys, did you guys look at the red tree though?
We looked at a tree in the yard that we had to look at. Either way, we couldn't.
Yeah, I think, I talked to Mike Boardner, he went to the other side, he went between Edison and Susie Hannah, and it's actually between Edison and Secretary.
I think no matter where it was, it was in the yard, so we can't.
See, when it's in a yard, we have no jurisdiction.
Right.
So the simple answer is, we would have no mechanism to do anything.
Okay, because I know that he's wrecked three fences in the last couple of years, and he won't even pay for fences.
Well, that's a civil issue, I would think.
That, that's the neighbor's issue, quite honestly, they have to pay.
All right, thank you.
I had to pay in the invoices, the general fund invoices are two hundred ninety-two thousand eighty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. And the liquid fuel is four thousand seven seventy-eight oh five, I'd like to make a motion that we pay for invoices.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Acker?
Uh, yeah, as directed by council, um, at the last meeting about the strategic management planning program, um, I did speak with Mr. Mike Carpenter. He recommended that I go ahead and, um, create a request for proposals and put that out to, for professional services or the, um, consultants that would do the initial assessment. And then we can advise the council on, on what those, uh, bids are, and then the council can decide whether or not to proceed. Uh, I know the council had said, go ahead and, and fill out the application for the program, but Mr. Carpenter's advice was, just go ahead and do the request for proposals, you're not committing to anything. The application will be approved, because it's pretty much automatic, you've decided you want to be part of the program, they, they'll allow you to do that. So that was his recommendation, and if there are no questions, I'll proceed that way.
Okay, cool.
The MMOs for next year for the police department are seventy-eight thousand sixty-three dollars, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Of course, with more police officers added, that will go up. And then the nine uniform is a hundred twenty-three thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars. And the workforce currently still is.
Okay.
All right, um, announcements. Annual Fire Department Parade and Memorial Service is October thirteenth at one P M. The annual Fire Police Halloween Parade is October seventeenth at seven P M. Trick or Treat in, in Sundery is Wednesday, October thirty-first, from six P M to one.
I don't think that's right.
All right, we'll scratch that one. So you can read the announcements just in case. All right, is there any audience comment at this time? Regina?
Thanks, I'd like to, um, make sure I understand the handicap parking. So the city ordinance supersedes state laws regarding handicap parking?
It adds to it. It gives more opportunities, but it doesn't supersede it. We can't do anything that's against the state ordinances, but what we can do is add to them.
So, and I, I guess I'll get back to that answer. Now, I've had a parking, um, handicap parking space since twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen. So I think what I'm hearing is that effective tonight, since everyone voted and passed this new ordinance, that anyone can park in my space now.
They could always, this was in your space.
But only for two hours.
Nope.
That is a pen dot law.
You never applied for a space for yourself, because our ordinance was a general parking space.
When I had to get that sign, I had to submit a medical form to a committee.
Yes, you did.
And based on what my physician said, I was able to get a reserved parking space.
But anybody could have parked there at any time, for as long as they wanted.
I, no, that's the, that's where I disagree with you, but I guess I would have to, um, produce that in writing.
Anybody with a handicap plaque could, could have parked there at any time.
And when I went online years ago, because like I said before, I had this problem, and there was a law there that said up to two hours, because that parking space would not be there had I not requested it. But I will try to look up the law and get it in writing and produce it to you as proof. So now we're saying that anyone can park there, and I can't call the police until I, um, purchase a sign.
We just, that's what we just went through, that's what started this whole conversation. There was someone that came, applied for a space, um, the space was put in, the, next to where their house was, and the neighbor was consistently parking their vehicles in there. And they tried to call the police, but there was nothing that they could do, because it's a public handicap space.
Because you have to show, you have to show written stuff to everyone here, because they're not up to date. Um, my, my question again is, so now, anyone can park in my space until I order?
I guess the confusion is, it's not your space, so it's, it's a handicap space that was placed by the city for anyone to use, based off of your request.
In front of my house, in front of my address.
It's not your street though.
But it's still street parking, still public parking, with a handicap space on it. So anyone could have always parked there at any time.
Anyone, with no handicap?
No, we have a handicap. Yeah, I guess I should.
All right, so let's, let's ignore me using the word, the wrong terminology saying mine, because I did consider it mine since twenty-twelve, and I'm the only person that's been parking there. So I'm hearing that now, in order for me to have it designated solely to me, I need to order a sign, pay seventy-five dollars, plus fifty dollars, or, so that, so initially, that cost is a hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Initial cost is a hundred dollars.
Oh, I didn't hear a hundred, I just heard seventy-five for the sign.
Twenty-five application, one hundred, or seventy-five per sign. We'll have to discuss, and just maybe, if someone already has a general that wants to convert to a, like, they've applied in the past, and they still have their application on file, um, well, either way, it says that they get to keep the apply, that's the only thing that we don't have.
That's what I mean, they get to keep it, but if they want to upgrade it.
They have to pay the whole thing.
They, if they want to upgrade it, no, they shouldn't have to pay the application, they just have to pay the.
So seventy-five on profit, fifty annually.
Right.
Okay, so now I didn't hear who and where we apply.
Administrator.
To the city administrator, so those applications are now available?
Yes.
So we have to come in and get them, they're not mail tops.
So, no, they never were, um, so you already have a space.
Yes.
So we're saying we have existing record of you having this space.
Yes.
So I, the, I think you just said was, they don't have to reapply, but if you'd like to have the designated with your tag number.
Yes.
Then I think you should just call in or come in and pay the seventy-five dollars, and we'll, we'll have the sign made, and then put that sign on yours, on that space.
So now, how long will that take?
Within a week.
Excuse me?
Within a week.
Within a week, I would have an upgraded sign? Okay. And may I ask, where do the cost figures come from?
Steve gave us an exact quote.
Yep, so I have it here, it has to do with the, so the, the streets department uh, has the capability of making street signs, and so they have a six-inch by twelve-inch length metal sign that they use, so there's across to that, the mounting hardware and adhesive, the background, uh, there's vinyl background, and then up to twenty-eight characters, there's certain amount per, per character, and then the protective overlay, so it, it helps protect it from graffiti and the elements. And then the labor cost of the, uh, individual in the department who makes the sign, and so that's how we come up with the seventy-five dollar fee.
So wasn't like a, a research to see what surrounding cities, um, charged, or if they did charge for this?
No, it was based on our costs.
Well, we did research other municipalities that had a similar ordinance.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to find out. So we kind of, oh, wait a minute.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so how long will it take, you said a week? I'm sorry, I lost my concentration. Okay, so it'll take a week, seventy-five dollars annually. When the cost is annually, is it on the date that you received it, or is it annually on a, uh, annual, like, uh, your fiscal year?
We have it in the ordinance, maybe it's around the age.
So will it be when your person applies for it, or will it be every year, um, just the beginning of the year, January through December?
The, what it would be, Virginia, is there's a renewal form, and if you want to maintain your thing, you just file it in January. And you just hand it to the.
Very much like the rental fees, your rental fee is due in July, I pay every July.
Yeah, in January, you hand a renewal form over and just say, I want to keep my spot. And, I mean, that's a simplified thing, but.
By February first of each year, so you file a renewal application by February first of each year.
And what I said for this year, unless anyone has objection to it, any applications that you get the rest of this year, we'll just count all of them next year, and the first renewal fee will be in twenty-twenty-one.
Oh, it's beautiful. Okay, um, one more thing, I think, um, one second, so. All right, thank you.
Everybody should have the budget packet in their folder, so they can start working on the budget.
Budgets, do you have any schedule?
No, we didn't schedule any.
Any other, um, public announcements tonight?
Mayor's, I want to make one announcement on behalf of the Sundert Police Officers Association. Uh, October nineteenth is our annual pumpkin feeding for kids, up at the Autobahn Church, we'll have a time set, it's not a, we work for Brady Dieter, up at church, they have a whole bunch of games and activities, so if you have any kids, grandkids, anyone like that you want to bring up, October nineteenth, uh, it's usually in the afternoon, so we had a good turnout last year, hopefully. It's nice out, we have it outside, and if it's raining, we have it inside, so.
Any other audience comments?
I think one more thing, please. With the renewal application, is that going to be online, or will it be mailed to us?
Hopefully eventually online.
Right now, it's gonna be a written form.
Yeah.
Right now, it'll be written form.
Written form, but we will, so I do get a letter from Cole to renew my rental license, will we get that, or will?
We just give a free pop letter, send it right, blah, this is a bit, you can get it, just write it out.
Yeah, we're, we have to do an inventory of all of the spaces out there, um, I've already talked to, to Mr. Walker about that. And, uh, but yeah, we'll have to establish a process of sending out letters. And then we want to have the application forms available on the website, the site that's under construction, that we plan to have done by the end of the year, we're making good progress with it, so before the end of the year, we have to have that website published, with all the forms that you need for many of the different programs.
Well, I'd like to thank you for your hard work and your research, and I guess it's a good deal for the city, thank you.
Um, okay, one question now. Who's going to do the application?